Ladies and gentlemen, if I can have your attention, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. It's good to see everyone this afternoon on Monday, November the 19th. This is our council meeting for which we will be voting on items that we've discussed at our workshop at the beginning of the month, so we're glad to see everyone. We do have agendas that are back here by Mr. Dunston. If anyone would like to grab one of those and follow along, you're certainly welcome to. Thank you, Vanna, that was a good job. At this point in time, I would like to call, we have a special guest tonight, Reverend James McKenzie with Allen Temple AME Church. And Reverend McKenzie, I can see you around the column there. If you'd like to come forward, we'd like to turn my phone over to you to open our meeting in prayer, please.
Yes, ma'am. Let us pray. Eternal God, we thank you for yet another beautiful day and another opportunity to serve and worship you. Lord God, we thank you for Mayor Smith and the entire city, council, and workers of the great city of Tifton. Lord God, it is our prayer that you just continue to shower your blessings upon them. And may your Holy Spirit, God, just continue to lead and guide and direct them in their leadership of this great place we call home, Tifton, Georgia. In your son's holy name, we pray, amen.
Thank you Reverend McKenzie, thank you very much. Isn't it great that we live in a place where we can open a government meeting with prayer? I'm very appreciative of that. Gentlemen, you have your agenda before you, those were emailed out to us. The next item on our agenda is the approval, unless you have any changes. Well, my goodness.
Yeah, we also live in a great country that does the pledge.
We do. I got ahead of myself. Everyone stand please and let's offer the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for pointing that out, I forgot where my mind was. Alright, now, we will take an approval of the agenda. I recommend a motion for that unless there's a recommendation for any changes in order or the items on the agenda.
So moved.
Alright. Alright, motion second, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Alright, and I'd like to go ahead and point out, Councilman Terrell is going to be a few minutes late this evening, and we do have Councilman Sales who is on the speakerphone. He has called in to be with us tonight, he is out of town. So Frank, can you hear us okay, everything good?
Yeah, sure can.
Okay, good deal. The next item on our agenda is approval of the last two meetings that we've had, October the 15th council meeting and the November 5th workshop. And those were emailed to us, so at this point, I will take a motion to either make any changes or to accept those minutes that are presented.
I move to accept as written.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes, thank you Jack. The next item is something that we always enjoy, that's when we have presentations. And I'd like to call on Natasha Patrick and Candace Amos, who are going to be making a presentation on the GMA Wellness Grant Check. So ladies, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before we start with the check presentation, I would like to introduce to you our city's Wellness Committee. I'm Natasha Patrick, Site Manager for the Leroy Rogers Senior Center, and I'm happy to take on the new role as our city's Wellness Coordinator. I have with me Mr. Kiefer Daltry, he's with the Fire Department. Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Morgan Atwater, she's the Public Relations Manager for the City of Tifton. And then we have Ms. Emily Beaman, she's our new HR Director. We've all, we all started on board in August. Besides Ms. Emily, she came with us on last week, she joined us on last week, and we're happy to have you, by the way, she said we dragged her in. Just to name a few of the things that we've done so far. We've done physical activities, several lunch and learns, and health screenings. Some of the physical activities were our exercise classes, our ready-set walks, and our volleyball games that were done at the fire station. A few of the lunch and learn topics were the when to go to the ER versus the convenient care, managing stress management in the workplace, and mental health awareness. A few of our health screenings are the flu shot clinics and biometric screenings. Also, we utilized our Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Link for employee education with topics such as diabetes awareness and breast cancer awareness. Our main goal is getting to know all of our city employees on a more personal level so that we can determine their health and wellness needs and hopefully come up with 2019 as a wellness, oh, I'm sorry, 2019 as a year full of wellness. We are honored to receive this grant, and now I'll turn it over to Ms. Candace.
Good evening, good evening. You have a wonderful bonus committee, they've been great in helping your wellness program go forward. I would like to say that, you know, your employees, they are your greatest asset. They are the ones who run the day-to-day operations of your organization. So you want to make sure that they are at their healthiest. You know, sometimes we take our health for granted, and if we aren't well, how can we do the job that we love? How can we be there for our family and friends? So I would like to commend the City of Tifton for being in your employees' corner, for being there for them, looking out for them. And I want to present to you, on behalf of Georgia Municipal Association, a health promotion and a voting grant in the amount of $5,000.
Oh, this is wonderful, thank you.
Alright, Ma'am, do you want to come down and we could get a picture?
Why don't we have all of the council come down and...
Our next item that we have on the agenda is a very special presentation. You know, one of the things that I think has been very beneficial for us as a council is when we really get to know some of the people that we have the opportunity to work with. And tonight, I'm going to call on Steve Hightower to come forward and make a presentation to someone who means an awful lot to us, Garfield Rainey.
Garfield, you are just, only forever. It's amazing how they've gotten older and we haven't, though, isn't that awesome how that's worked? That's just, it's unbelievable. But Dolores, we're so glad to have you with us tonight, and your sweet Raven. Raven, it's good to see you, we're glad you're here. But we are so honored to be able to just do something for you. It's just a small, very small token of our appreciation to your years of service for the City of Tifton. So Steve, I'll turn it over.
Mayor, Council, tonight, we're gonna give Lieutenant Rainey his shadow box. I didn't prepare a speech, you know, so. And Chief Doughty is out sick, he's running a fever, thinks he's got the flu. But Garfield has been with us for over 30 years, and once again, he's had my back because he's already written a speech for me that I could probably give. It's because, the thing about it is, is he's been dedicated, he's been loyal, he's been committed, he's been involved in the community in every aspect he could. He's done just about everything that has been asked of him, and a lot of things that weren't required of him. He has went above and beyond on just about everything that he's touched as a law enforcement officer and in his personal life. He's been with me for the last 30 years, Drennan, he's been in several more back here for years, and he's always been right there with us. You can always depend on G. And we peeked at him about several different things, I'm not gonna bring all that up. The thing about it is, is the things that he's already wrote his speech on has been his commitment to Tifton Police Department, the City of Tifton, his loyalty, his dedication, and his community service, and the way he's served our community, and we appreciate it. Garfield, you come up?
Thank you very much, this is really, really nice. Wow. I'd like to thank the Mayor and Council, and the City of Tifton. 30 years is a long time. I've learnt a lot and still learning. But I think I left it in good hands, you guys right there. Congratulations on your promotions, Lieutenant and Sergeant. Like I say, I want to thank everybody, the new city manager, Mr. Pozinski? Did I say that right? Alright. I know it's kinda hard. But again, I want to thank everybody, it's been a long time. I'm now retired, I can spend a lot of time with the family now. This is my right-hand lady right here, Ray Ray. I get to be home when she come home from school and help her with her homework and help her read a book every day, she has to read a book every day. Right? But again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, I really appreciate it. What the future holds, I don't know yet, but I know the rest of the year, I'm just gonna rest and take care of some projects around the house. I got a lot of things I need to do around the house. Yeah, you know. Yeah, yeah. She gets on me every day about what she needs done, so I'm gonna try to get that done. Yes, sir. Yeah. And we kept a eye on them. You guys were packed up, and you don't make that kind of thing. Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. I did my best. It may always make everybody happy, but I did my best. Thank you.
I'd just like to add, we're just so proud of you, Garfield, and you are part of a family that loves you and respects you and appreciates you, and we're gonna miss you very, very much, so please don't be a stranger. Please, please don't. We're just, we're just so thankful for your family and all that you do. The other day, I had the opportunity, children at JT Reddick, and they wanted to see one of the police officers, so I called and spoke to the chief, and the next thing I know, here comes Garfield. Well, that was the end of it, they were talking about him coming in, they were just thrilled, and he did such a good job with those kids. To tag on what you were saying, you have a very special talent for that because not everybody can relate to those kids that way, but they just, they think you are the bomb, and we do too, and we're just so thankful for your years of service, and thank you for sharing him with us all these years. And I know you're glad to have him home in the afternoons, aren't ya? Okay, okay, well, thank you, Garfield, thank you so much.
Thank you all, thank you all for being here. I think that says a lot for y'all to be here, to be a part of this. Thanks, guys, y'all be careful. Okay, we will carry on with our agenda. The next item is public comments. Jessica, do we have anybody that wanted to make any? Okay, no, okay. Alright, next on our agenda is our consent agenda, and there are five items that we have discussed in the workshop, so they're not, it's not new information. If you'd like, we can take these all together with one motion, or if you want to separate them out, if there's any discussion or questions we have about any of the items on the consent agenda, we can take them individually. I don't know what is wrong with mine.
When I make the motion, I'm gonna approve all six.
Six, not, did I say five? I can't add, okay, alright.
So you made the motion?
Motion.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
Okay, alright, so we have a motion as second to approve all six items on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, not opposed. Alright, under new business, we have a resolution. Pete, do you want to talk about the resolution? Is there anything we need to go over on that, or has that already been discussed?
Mayor, Council, as you know, we've been under discussions concerning the purchase of 5.751 acres, also known as half of Captain's Point Trailer Park. This purchase is being made for the idea of urban redevelopment. We have prepared the agreement for purchase and sale. Again, it's about 5.751 acres, we're looking towards a closing date of April the 1st. We are now in the, once this is executed, we'll have a 30-day indulgence period. The property's been, the title has been reviewed. There's also an environmental study that's actually being performed as we speak. So it looks like everything is in order, and we should be able to move forward and close this property on April the 1st.
Okay. Any questions, comments from any of the council concerning this project? Okay. I have one, I'm very excited, this is something we've been working on for a long time. The entire Mount Wilson redevelopment area is something we've been talking about, and...
Bless you.
This was, it's kind of odd. Securing this property is going to be a huge first step, and we have Pete and Jessica and LaFretia, and I had the opportunity to meet with some folks from the neighborhood a couple of weeks ago and had a very good discussion. We had a representative from the Regional Commission there, we have representation from the Housing Authority. And the reception of this project is just, it's really exciting. You can really, you can begin to see the synergy that's building, and I've received several calls from some folks, and as conversations happen over the course of the next months, I'll share those with everybody from various business people who want to get involved. So it's really exciting, and I think it's gonna really change Tifton for the better, and so I'm excited about that. So that being said, we do need a motion to approve the resolution to move forward.
Mayor, Council, I mean, this, we reviewed this contract, of course, in executive session, it's necessary for us to vote on this in a public meeting.
Right.
But, so the record's clear, again, it's 5.751 acres. This is the half of the Captain's Point Trailer Park. The purchase price is $273,585.26, and it's being purchased from Captain's Point LLC.
Okay.
And I will tell you that the money for closing will come out of reserves at the front, but then, we'll, Splosh Money will be returning that because we did put a property acquisition.
Exactly, okay, thank you for that clarification.
It's clear by doing this, we are here to serve all of Tifton.
Exactly, thank you.
Not part of Tifton, we're committed to all of Tifton, the areas that need help, regardless of where they are.
Exactly, well said, thank you.
With that, I make a motion to approve the purchase.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll be more than happy to second that motion.
Alright, thank you, so we have motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Alright, excellent. Councilman Terrell was supposed to be here by now. Did he say how late he was going to be, or?
He didn't when we talked.
Can we recess, can we recess and call him?
I could do mine first.
Yeah, why don't we do this? Why don't we go ahead and swap around, let you go ahead and do your manager's report, because I know Johnny wanted to be here for the board presentation. So, yeah, if you could do that, that'd be great, thank you.
First thing I wanted to do is introduce you formally to Emily Beaman. Emily, if you want to, come on up to the podium, please.
Put you on the spot.
As you know, we went through interviews, and we had some great talent. Emily has worked in Tifton for the last couple, four years actually, at the hospital, so with her qualifications and her educational background, she was most qualified, and I think she's gonna be the best fit for our team, and she has started and almost into her full week already. She's been around to all the departments, meeting everybody, and then getting obviously busy with serving our employees in the HR role. But we're excited to have her, and we just, we're looking forward to get started with that, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily, we're looking forward to working with you, glad to have you on board, thank you.
The second thing I wanted to share with you, the Police Department just finished their accreditation for promotions. This is a very longstanding process with testing, oral interviews, and actually, people come from outside the agency to do all this assessment. And Chief, we had six, I believe, that went through the assessment. We had a couple positions that were vacant, a sergeant position and a lieutenant in CID. And the two that obviously came on top, scored the highest, and did the greatest on their assessment, Jacob Teeter was promoted to sergeant. He's detective, and then Daniel Ray was promoted to lieutenant in CID. So congratulations to both of them. Man, look excited, it's a great time to hear.
Walk him up.
I would say this, it's an honor, I grew up here. I never would have thought, and a lot of people that know me would have thought, that I've never worked for the Police Department. But it is an honor to work here and be able to put back in the community that you grew up in, so.
That's nice, thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
We're real excited to have him and Jacob, they both do a great job, and it's, you know, it's that achievement that these guys and gals are seeking in the promotional process, and when you do it through assessments like that, it's really mistakenly, and they are the, they're the best of the best.
Excellent.
So we're excited to move on with that. And then thirdly, we are all wrapped up with yard trash. We are back, Dr. Richard, we are back into regular motion now with yard trash collection. ESG is finishing up some odds and ends and alleyways, but I wanted to give you a report on total deposit into the inner site for this storm. So residents, residents themselves, brought in 362 tons. So, and we didn't charge, so they brought to the inner landfill 362, that's a lot of material. Golden ended up bringing 411 tons into the inner site. And then ESG and DOT brought in 1,553 tons.
Wow.
So total of 2,326 tons of yard debris. Just to put this in perspective, that's 4.6 million pounds of debris from Hurricane Michael.
That's unbelievable.
So a lot of work, and again, I just, I can't thank them enough. Richard Golden and hanging, hanging that, hanging in there with us and taking this area, and then Scotty and Jeff and the whole ESG team for what they did. But that is a lot of debris, and obviously, we'll be submitting that in FEMA, into FEMA.
Well, we'd like to also offer our thanks to DOT, to ESG, to Golden, and to our citizens for being patient through this process. So thank you very much for this.
And the bottom line is, again, Ricky Hobbie really just, he earns, he earns another gold star for handling and managing all this debris. We have, literally have a grinder going day and night trying to grind this material up. So, you know, we're concluded, we have the stats to back it up, and hopefully, we get reimbursed like the last time in an efficient manner, so. That's all I have for the report.
Okay, alright. Alright, very good. Again, thank you, gentlemen, for all that hard work, because I know that was, that was a lot, that was above and beyond the call of duty. I'm going to go ahead and move forward with the report. Johnny was going to be here, and we have been working on filling the vacancies with our Housing Authority. We had three spots that were open with that particular board. Since Councilman Terrell is not here to do the, I cannot make a motion. Jack, if you, you or Wes or Frank, I don't know if you've got the list there in front of you, but if one of you could make the motion, I can certainly second for these appointments for the Housing Authority. I will say that the Housing Authority has been very good to work with. We've asked them to do some things regarding attention to some of the properties. They've been at the table every time we've had a meeting about the Mount Wilson redevelopment area, and they've been very receptive. Not too long ago, we took a tour of all the properties and met with the board, so I want to thank them and their director, Chandra Park, for their efforts and their work on making sure that we have safe, affordable housing for many of our citizens. So that being said, let's take the Housing Authority first, with those applicants that have submitted their names.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. Hill, Ms. Joan Howard, and Mr. Dennis Whitehead. And Mr. Whitehead would be the Housing Authority resident.
That's correct, yeah. Okay, thank you. And I will second that motion that Jack has made, I appreciate that, Jack. Is there any further discussion concerning these appointments? Alright, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that carries. We do still have vacancies on the Tifton Zoning Board of Appeals and the Historic Preservation Commission. We do have applicants that have submitted their name to be considered. Jessica, I don't know that one of these is, Ms. Bell, is that a city resident, does that city address?
I believe she's in the county.
Okay.
The one I didn't want to mention, I just got it today, was the Chase Nicholson. And he actually lives in the historic.
He's in, yeah, in the historic district, okay. If you'd like...
Mayor, I would rather wait for next month to talk about the HPC.
Okay, that's fine. Does anybody have any issue with that, is that okay? Frank suggested we wait till next month to talk about the Historic Preservation Commission, and that's certainly fine.
Sure.
And then we asked about Tifton Zoning Board of Appeals, would you just pick those up all next month?
That's fine.
Okay, let's do that, okay, let's do that. Alright, that's all we have on the agenda with the exception of Mayor and Council comments, so Frank, let's wait for the train to go by, and then I'll let you go first, if you don't mind, if you have any comments or concerns that you have for the group.
Is that a train going by?
That's a train. Wait just one second.
Yeah, I just, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, that's good.
Yeah, I just want to say that Pete and I have been looking at some concerns in the historic district, and some of them are part of our ongoing review of code enforcement issues that we've had. So we are looking at that, and also, we've been talking, you know, for a while about some new signage and lighting, I guess, that those are being addressed.
Excellent, very good. So we hope to have some information that we can share with everyone.
Yeah, we will, and Frank and I have talked, and I think, you know, by second week in December, we should have kind of a shell plan, what we're doing, and with some dates, at least for programming purposes, what we're gonna start with.
Perfect, okay, excellent, alright, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Wes?
Off the top of my head, I want to sort of report to you, you see tonight that we promoted with, from within, these police officers, we have a lot of available officer positions still remaining out there, SROs for schools, so if anyone knows of anyone who would be interested in those positions, please contact our HR so we can, we can get the ball rolling on that, because obviously, you know, we need some help.
Exactly.
Great comment, I will mention that Emily, one of her really strong points at the hospital, she helped recruit for positions. So we've talked about that all already, and looking at what we're, what we're doing, how we're doing it, and helping Cap Hyman and the chief draw... and helping Captain Hyman and the chief draw potential officers in, so we're working steadily on that, and we'll, we're gonna keep on it till we're successful.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for that, Wes. Jack?
I hate talking about trash, and I don't even know if it was an issue, but I like, I like Pete to, I just had to be sitting there looking out the window today, and they get the neighbor's trash can, and they pick up the garbage, and probably ten minutes later, here it comes. It could have been the same truck, I don't know, I went watching, come around, I almost identified the truck, and they pick up the recycle. It was a little bit, it was a little bit odd, and maybe they follow each other. It didn't happen at my house that way, but I'd like you to, you know, if we get calls to say they're putting them all together again, within ten minutes, they come to the same house with a truck. It wasn't that split truck, it was that, let's put it all in there, and so, you know, it's one of these enough is enough, that kind of thing going on, that's, you know, that's broken the contract, and I'm tired of it. I've been a supporter, but if that's what's happening, it's time to just crack down on that. So if we get calls, I saw it, I just couldn't guarantee it was the same truck.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. In closing, my comments are just, you know, here we are in the Thanksgiving season, and I just want to say how very thankful I am for this community. I had the opportunity to speak recently with the Merchants Association at their annual breakfast, and just seeing all those folks who have made a commitment to this town by putting their business in Tifton and their passion for what they do, just really makes me proud to serve and to be involved. When we have events like the retirement of Garfield Rainey, who's been with our city for so very long, you're happy on one aspect because you wish him well, and you want him to go and enjoy these retirement years that he's worked so hard for, but on the other hand, you're a little sad because you've become friends with these folks, and they mean something to you. So just as we, as we approach Thanksgiving this week, I just want to say I'm thankful for each of you and the work that you do. Pete, I'm so thankful that you're our city manager. You really make Tifton proud. Jessica, I mean, Morgan, I start going around naming names, I'll leave someone out, but I'm just, I'm just so thankful that we are in Tifton. You know, there are a lot of communities that struggle. There are a lot of communities that have poor economies, or they have such challenges, or there are, you know, terrible things that happen in the community, and we've just been so blessed and so fortunate, and for that, I'm just really thankful. So that is, that's my closing statement. So unless there's anything else, we do not have to have executive session tonight, do we? Is that correct? Okay, yay. I'm thankful for that, too. So, anyway, so unless there's any further business to come before us, we will be adjourned, and have a good evening.
Thank you.